Okay, we're about to start. Fifty-eight regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Invocation by Honorable Counselor Amy Rose Moreno singing by followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang and Kagayan di Oro March, please rise.
Let us all remember that we are in the Holy Presence of God in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, as we enter this workplace, we bring your presence with us. We speak your peace, your grace, your mercy, and your perfect order in this office. We acknowledge your power over all that will be spoken, thought, decided, and done within these walls. We thank you for the gifts you have blessed us with. We commit to using them responsibly in your honor. Give us a fresh supply of strength to do our job. Anoint our thoughts, ideas, and energy so that even our smallest accomplishment may bring you glory. As we start the week, help us to be the light and the source of inspiration to our constituents and colleagues. Put the right words in our mouths that will build others up and give them hope. Help us to be a source of blessing to those people that are going through difficult times and fill our workplace with peace and remove anything that may bring strife. Heavenly Father, we also raise Israel and Gaza to you and pray for those suffering. We ask that you provide peace in this crisis and protection and comfort for all those who have been impacted. We pray for your peace and reconciliation to overcome conflict. We ask this in the name of Jesus, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit now and forever.
Amen.
In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Pawi ng Pilipinas.
Okay. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors, Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable JR Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo B. Calizo, Honorable George S. Goaking, Honorable Jose PPS Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lodes Esgaani, Honorable Regeline Mercedes El Balaba in this post, Honorable James K. Joseph II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members, Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim Linga na mga barangay president and Honorable John Michael Alseno, City Escape Federation President. There is quorum, Madam Presiding Officer.
Quorum is hereby certified. So, it's the birthday of Counselor Suset Daba. May I request Counselor Amy Moreno to please lead the singing of the birthday song?
So, may I ask everyone to please rise? Next. Okay. So, happy birthday, Counselor Suset Magtahas Daba. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Yay!
Okay. Vila? Anyway, good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, our friends from media, our guests today. We have also visitors from Masterson Senior Citizen Association, Maseka. Mayong Hapon, kaninyo. Ah, we have a very gamayratong agenda for today. More committee hearings, please. So somehow, yes, Majority Floor Leader, you have the floor. Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bibot Rodriguez, members of the City Council. Visitors, guests, we have in the gallery, people of Kagayan di Oro who are watching us in their respective social media platform. Good afternoon. Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on October 9, 2023 and consider the furnishing of the capes de ruedas reading itself.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
On the special, we have no special. I move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
On the special report, we don't have any special report except the intimation of Attorney Jim S. Jodes. He will be the first man to deliver the special report next session of this council.
Okay.
Now, we have a letter here, Madam Chair, from Regilene S. Vidad, accredited partner Miss Universe Philippines Kagayan di Oro, requesting audience with the membership of the council and the vice mayor.
Is she around?
Nana ba?
Nana tumvisita, Sir Torch. The Miss Universe, wala pa. Ah, wala pa. Wala pa.
Ah, wala pa rin. So, let us just.
Nagpagwapo.
So, we will tackle this again once they are here.
Yeah, if they are around. Okay.
So, let us proceed with the business of the day. Number one is the Proposition Solution Number 2023-519, accrediting the Masterson Senior Citizens Association, Maseka, for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to DILG Circular 2022-083 and Article 64 Rule 13 of the Rules and Regulation implementing the 1991 Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under COA Circular pertinent thereto and for its membership in the Committee on People's Organization of the City Development Council pursuant to Ordinance Number 14334-2022. May I request Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized, Madam Chair.
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. jointly with the entire officers and members of the youth organization, I mean, senior citizens organization, move for its approval.
Second, yes. Manifestation, Counselor Amy Moreno, please.
Yes, mayong hapon, Madam Presiding Chair, Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez and of course atong MFL ang ako ang mga kauban sa 20th City Council and to our guests. Naalang kuy query, no? Madam Chair, regarding this, as much as we all would love not to make Maseka part of the local special bodies, I would just like to ask if they were given, if nagagis sila sa CSWD or sa OSKA prior to this approval?
Okay, yes, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Counselor Amy Moreno has heard the answer of our constituents that it's a yes.
As a nagagina. Okay, so, the angina. So, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried. Congratulations, Maseka.
Madam Chair, there is a request from the group.
Yes.
Or a group photo.
Okay, group photo, okay.
Anyway, we have the time.
Karana. Okay, recess, five-minute recess. Alit mo ma, magpicterta, sir. Mga bata pa oh.
Orang mga teenager.
Ma'am, balik na ma'am. Ma'am, diretso. Diretso sa taas, ma'am, para makita mo.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tino tadool, tadool.
Okay, here, ah, na, tadool. Dayon ang uban si guro para balanse di'to ang uban. At makita mo ha, okay. Uy, mainak eh dagangan ato senior. Yes, so. Smile! Okay. Congratulations again. Okay. So. Resume na ta. Okay, session resume.
Item two.
Ah, session recess, recess for five minutes. Okay. Balik na naman siya, arumausan na lang.
It lang ha, it lang ayaw.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, our visitors are here.
Okay.
Will receive a letter from Mr. Vidad, partner of Miss Universe Philippines Kagayan di Oro. They are requesting for an audience to discuss with us the staging of the Miss Universe Philippines Kagayan di Oro City 2024 pageant to be scheduled on January 27, 2024. So therefore, Madam Chair, may I request that to amplify this request about this Miss Universe beauty pageant in City of Kagayan di Oro, may I request that Regilene S. Vidad or Mr. Dennis Almasan be recognized?
Okay.
And I move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Rules suspended. So, we would like to welcome our visitors today, Mag Squae, who is here, and organizers, no, for the Miss International come January. Ah, Miss Universe.
Miss Universe.
Come January, bato?
On January 27.
27. So, probably you can welcome and we will give you the floor, no? Yes.
Salamat. To our City Mayor, Clerics Ui, to our beloved Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez, esteemed members of the City Council and all present in this hall, I extend a warm good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
First and foremost, I am profoundly grateful for sharing your generous and valuable time today. Daghang salamat po. As a representative of Miss Universe Philippines 2024, I, Mag Squae, a proud Kagayan-anon, have the distinct honor of serving as the newly appointed Miss Universe Philippines National Search Consultant. Thank you. It is with great. Sandaliya, may kodigo ako kasi natetense ako, okay. It is with great pleasure that I announce that Miss Universe Philippines Organization is offering remarkable opportunities to talented young women aspiring to become beauty queens. I am absolutely delighted to share that Miss Universe Philippines is gracing our beloved city through the Miss Universe Philippines Kagayan di Oro. Thank you po, thank you sa support.
Wala pa rin mga candidates, no? Wala pa candidates.
Wala pa, wala pa. Anyway, it is my hope for our city to wholeheartedly support this incredible chance to promote our home, the Kagayan di Oro City. Most importantly, let us demonstrate to the world, the universe rather, that we are the true city of golden friendship, a place where unity reigns. And that, we extend warm smiles to welcome our guests. And now, ladies and gentlemen, allow me to introduce the franchisee or as we call it, the Miss Universe Philippines Accredited Partner, Miss Regeline Vidad along with our esteemed pageant director, Mr. Dennis Almasan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clerics Ui, mayong hapon, Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez and to all the members of the council. I am Regeline Vidad, the CEO and President of Bell Homes Development Corporation. Ako ang didawat ang responsibilidad isip accredited partner sa Miss Universe Philippines sa Kagayan di Oro. I am also honored to be chosen as the leader of Miss Universe Philippines CDO 2024 in divorce. Usas sa akong mga advocacya mao ang pagtabang sa mga kababainhan. Kining Miss Universe Philippines CDO 2024, usap ka plata porma para makapadayan sa mensahe sama sa woman empowerment. Billy lang sa atong dakba yan, kundi sa tibuok Pilipinas. Salamat kaayo sa mainit nga kinasingkasing nga pagdawat. Usab, mayong hapon, kaninyo, tanan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clerics Ui, and good afternoon also to Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez and of course, good afternoon to all the members of the City Council. Of course, I'd like to have a special mention to my classmate in high school, Honorable Ian Nakaya. He's my classmate in high school. Okay, by the way, the winner of the Miss Universe Philippines Kagayan di Oro will represent Kagayan di Oro to the national competition, which is the Miss Universe Philippines. So, she will be the bearer of our city. And we were here so that we could ask your moral support for our project and also, we would like to invite everyone to please watch our pageant, which will be on January 27, 2024 next year. That will be at the atrium Lim Kit Kaif Center at 7:00 PM. And we will also have a gala night, which is a swimsuit competition com gown competition. So, we'll be having a lot of guests from Manila. So, we have a standard from the nationals. So, we'll expect that we'll have guests from Manila or judges, our guests and everything. Yeah, beauty queens like celebrities. We'll also be featuring talents from Kagayan di Oro like, can we mention Mark Bautista and we're proposing Arthur Neri to be one of the performers. Anyways, this Sunday, October 22, we will have our screening at FNF. we will have our screening at FNF, East Concourse, second floor at Limket Kay Center. So we're very grateful and we are very thankful for the warm welcome that you have given to us. Thank you for the time that you have spent to us. Thank you po. We're open for any questions if you would like to ask something. Yeah, yeah, if there are any questions, you can throw questions to us.
Any question, counselor, yes, counselor. Michael Seno.
Counselor, wag lang personal, huh? Ano lang yung.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Vice Mayor Joseline Bebot Rodriguez. And of course, to the members of the 28th City Council and friends from the video, fellow Cagayanans, mayong hapon. Mangutan na lang ko, Madam Presiding Officer, no? We have just recently concluded our Miss Cagayan di Oro. No, and then we have this Miss Universe Cagayan di Oro. What will happen to our Miss Cagayan di Oro? Unsi yang i-represent. If this Miss, uh, Miss Universe Cagayan di Oro.
But is there a Miss Universe from the, from selected amongst the, the Miss Cagayan?
As during my time, when I was still the chairperson of the Miss Cagayan di Oro, it is automatic na Miss Universe po siya. But this time, you, you mag, if you want to compete or join the pageant of the Miss Universe Philippines, you have to go through the process, which is um, dapat maging candidate siya or mag-apply for the Miss Cagayan di Oro Philippines CDO. So you need to screen. Hindi na po siya automatic.
Do we have the Miss Universe CDO during the pageant, the Cagayan di Oro, wala?
Moni, moni karoon, Madam Presiding Officer.
No, 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 what I mean, during the time nga naabi tayo, wala. Oh, sige. So they have to go, to go through the process.
Yes, they have to go through the process at the. Ayun, everybody's welcome, Miss Cagayan di Oro, Miss, ano ba yan, mga Miss. I don't know, Kwiyamis will be having their own. It's provincial kasi po, so it's different.
But the same organizer. Uh, different.
I'm, I'm with Miss Universe Philippines. No, different po.
Ah, okay.
So ang Miss Universe Philippines, they have accredited partners in different places. Different cities and provinces around the, the world, actually, around the world.
Okay.
Okay.
So that is why I'm asking, Madam Presiding Officer.
So they have to apply.
Unsi atuang masuporta sa atuang Miss Cagayan di Oro, which is run by the city government. It's the first time that have run by the city government. Unsa nga.
If, if ever that there was no Miss CDO, no Miss CDO Universe that time of the competition.
Automatic sila.
Then they can apply as for the pageantry because.
Yes, they can screen.
Yeah.
Screen on October 22. Everybody's welcome.
October 22?
Yes, they have to be screened.
October 22 and the venue is?
In Limket Kay.
Limket Kay.
Limket Kay.
Thank you, Madam President.
What time? 10:00 AM onwards.
10:00 AM onwards, okay.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Joseline.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you po, counselor, for that wonderful question. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Bern James.
Butla na ko mangutana, ma'am. Kung, diba laylahi mapod ng frankisa ang kitaw na to, Miss Supranational, Miss International, Miss World? So dili po siya align sa katong sa Miss Universe?
Hindi po. Miss Universe is handled by one company. It's called Empire PH that handles Miss Universe Philippines, Miss Philippines, and the Mister Filipinas Worldwide. Tatlong pageant yung hinahandle niya.
So muna sa katong ang CEO katong Taga-Tailand?
Yes. Pero dito po sa atin, sa Pilipinas, ang may arri po ay si Mr. Jonas Gafford, who's going to be here on the coronation night.
So baliko lang ako, katong ipangutanan ni Consell Michael Seno, ang katong am, kasamtangan baling Miss Cagayan di Oro, kinalan mo apply sa siya, magpa-screenings sa siya para sa Miss Universe.
Yes po, tama po, tama po.
Salamat. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Any more questions?
Any more question po.
Anybody who is interested to join? Somehow, so no more questions.
Si, si Counselor, ano?
Counselor Jay Pasqual, you're going to join?
No. May hapon, and I would just like to ask for surprises.
Uh, our first prize, very generous po ang ating franchisee. Uh, first prize is 200,000, and the second prize is 150,000, and the third prize is 100. And for the consolation prizes, it will be 20,000, 20,000 pesos for each.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any more question? No more? So thank you very much, Ma'am Mag Squae and the rest who are here today. So salamat kaayo sa inyong pag-anhe. And so we will proceed.
Thank you very much po, Vice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Daghang salamat, daghang salamat, okay. Probably you'll bring your candidate by January here. A Miss, yeah, yeah, Miss Universe. Anyway, let us proceed, the majority floor leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Can we have a photo? Session with.
Picture, you want the picture? Oh, photo. Yeah, yeah, we can have it. Sige, uh. Yes, Mag.
Mag is proposing kang counselor, Cabanlas na siya magpa-picture.
Ah, okay. Okay naman to.
Si Lord, dito ka.
Dito ka na.
Actually, matagal na natin pinadalay ang letter. Oo, matagal na.
Sige lang.
Eh pero, that's, for me, it's nothing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Bernie, mura gis tisadu si Attorney James. Ma-apply siguro yet. Okay. Let's proceed, council, majority floor leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you, thank you very much. This is the day of reconciliation. Uh, item two. Second item, Turks.
Mag resume pata. Oh, okay, session resume. Leave suspension.
Move to leave the suspension. Item two, Turks.
Item number two is proposed ordinance number 2023-318, appropriating the sum of 166,274 pesos and 41 cent tabos from the item, non-office general public services terminal leave benefits, monetization of earned leave credits, remark for Miss Imma V. Bustamante Administrative Assistant 5 City Budget Office in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the payment of the terminal leave pay of Mr. Elisito L. Acebes, former administrative aide for casual, which was assigned at the CDO Historical Commission, whose service ended last December 31, 2022.
Madam Chair, may I request Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Bebot Rodriguez, may hapon, may hapon sa tanan. Everything is in order, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-318.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Three, number three, Turks.
Item number three, proposed ordinance number 2023-319, authorizing the honorable city mayor Rolando Ui, representing the city government of Cagayan di Oro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of undertaking MOU with the Department of Public Forces and Highways, Cagayan di Oro City Sekan District Engineering Office, to be represented by its district engineer Gabriel L. Ginitaran, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the CY 2023 Farm-to-Market Road Project located in Barangay Gugman and Barangay Tablon, both this city, under the terms and conditions stipulated in the MOU held to attach. And for this purpose, appropriating the sum of 3 million pesos from the item, special programs, projects, upgrading, concreting of Farm-to-Market Road, LGU equity, under the Agricultural Productivity Office in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the city's 10% counterpart, counterpart fund therefore.
Certified urgent by our honorable city mayor Rolando Ui, I move for the approval of this item, Madam Chair.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number four, Turks. Huh? Up.
Inclusion.
Adi, I move for inclusion, Madam Chair, may I move for inclusion items four and five.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item four, Turks.
Item four is proposed resolution number 2023-520, condemning in the strongest possible terms the brutal and senseless murder of spouses Galpo and Maggie Ipanis and their three children in Barangay in Dahag, this city, and calling for the immediate investigation and filing of a criminal case against the perpetrators of this heinous crime, subject to styling, proponent Counselor Roger G. Abadai.
Move to appro, move to approve, move to recognize, Counselor Abadai.
Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized.
As a backgrounder, one of the victim here, the Miss, uh, kuano, uh, Ipanis, is city scholar, just graduated last year, Miss Criminology, so and the husband is also graduate of Criminology. So I move to approve this proposed resolution.
Second. Second, any objection? Manifestation? Okay, Counselor Bernice Parsha, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just like to ask the proponent, actually, Madam Chair, relatives po ni sa akong executive secretary, nga si ano. Uh, ang dili lang dun nga word kay murder, uh, marama under, marama tag under pagwata marama investigation. Ako lang ni, Madam Chair, namatay mga abugado. Or pwidi ba nga, or marama tag na judge na gritso, though, kabalo ko over the radio nga allegedly marama may naitabo di gi mayo. Pero pwidi ba ka ni, I don't know, sa proponent condemning the death nalang uh, kay sa murder ang atong ibot. Sa ako lang na, Mr. Chair, I don't know sa tu mga abugado lang na pagstorya, Mr. Chair, imo raw ka investigar pa manguta.
So we cannot preempt, no, while still in investigation, investigation. So, subject for styling, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Madam Chair, uh, we cannot assume that there was more than. We do not know the cause of death.
Yeah.
And unless there is an official report from the police.
Actually, it's still under autopsy, so we are waiting for the result.
Yes, now, uh, we cannot condemn something which is not, uh, which is vague.
Yeah.
We condemn a person or, we condemn the act, which is not sure whether it is murder or not.
Correct.
So we, we just convey our condolences.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Our condolences to the families and requesting the police to further to conduct of.
Immediate investigation.
A deep investigation as to the cause of death of the victims.
Yeah, eliminate the word, go on. Brutal and senseless murder.
And that would be an amendment, so therefore move for the amendment of the proposed ordinance. With the same proponent, Madam Chair.
Okay, and a second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Manifestation?
Yes, aklaro ko lang, uh, subject to styling, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Kigol mangutin ni, and their three children, mukha sa akong pagsabok, duha ka mga anak, then ang isa kay sister Imlo or Ixoon. So dili sila spouses Galpo and Maggie Ipanis and their three children, kenaapa may.
Napo isang Ixoon.
Na isa kay Ixoon.
So dili and their three children. Yeah, subject for styling, okay.
Subject to styling nalang na, yeah, Turks. Uh, number five, Turks.
Item number five is proposed ordinance number 2023-320, authorizing the honorable city mayor Rolando Ui, representing the city government of Cagayan di Oro, to enter into and sign the contract of service with the STI College Cagayan di Oro, represented by its school principal, Miss Angeli Gwen, covering the collaboration of the parties in the development of an exclusive mobile-based application that will automate solid waste management of the city under the terms and conditions stipulated in the draft contract of service attached her to.
May I request Counselor Abadai be recognized.
Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized.
I move for the approval of the proposed ordinance 2023-320.
And a second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
There being no other matters to take up, and with election waiting, move to adjourn.
Anyway, session adjourned, God bless us all.